Okay, we're kicking off our day two. We'll do roll call as we do introductions or whatever intro thing we're doing today. I want to thank everyone for their active participation yesterday. I hope everyone left feeling as good as I did, that we made some meaningful work and contributions and discussions and concessions, which is a part of any good agreement. I was particularly excited at the city manager's level of participation in our conversation yesterday. I think it's helpful to have a really good connection between the goals that we're setting and the operations side, so I'm encouraging you to keep helping us understand operations throughout today. And Dan, as well, thank you for your participation and all the subject matter expertise with our executive staff that's also giving up their weekend to be with us today. I was promised fun and team building from Sarah, so they brought donuts to start from Donut King, so I don't know which one of our staff said it was the best, but thank you. Clearly, my love language is donuts, so I'm happy with that choice. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Sarah.
All right, great. Well, good morning, everyone. Day two. Let's just get oriented back to our outcomes, our agenda, our rules. And then I hope you brought your competitive spirit this morning because we've got a really fun team challenge planned for you, as well as some really amazing, under like the $50 threshold prizes for our winning team. So we're real office supply nerds and you might enjoy Star's paper, awesome pens, fidget toys. Okay, is that better? Okay, sometimes we just were doing our best with this microphone system. Okay, so outcomes. We're here to identify goals to guide the development of a work plan, financial plan, aligned with capacity and resources. So lots of good discussion to get that rolling yesterday. You guys had the conversation yesterday about the shared understanding of the community and organizational context to inform the ideas that came out of that idea mapping exercise and did a great job keeping those things in mind. And then today, we'll continue our team building experience to just help solidify that strong cohesive partnership. And then at the end of the day, work on the team agreements necessary to help you guys move the work forward, the priorities forward that you're setting. So what we have planned, we'll do our team challenge. We'll do a quick recap. I want to hear from you all on how you thought the first day went. See if you had any reflections after kind of thinking about it last night. And then we'll do our team challenge. We'll get into the review of our goal refinement exercise yesterday. So tried to clean, you have the notes from yesterday over there. There's a little echo on this. You guys not getting it? It's just me? Okay. That I cleaned those notes up from yesterday and tried to organize them under your overarching goal areas, so we'll take a look at that. And then just, there's a few follow-up discussions. We need to talk about some more about the multicultural center. And then just take a fresh look at it with fresh eyes this morning and see if there's there any other questions, any other contributions before we finalize. And we are going to do a little prioritization exercise. So Jenny and I talked through what could be meaningful for the council and for staff as they put the budget together, and so we'll work on that as well. At 10:30, we've got a lengthier break because as you guys learned yesterday, we're not doing an extended lunch, so there's lots of snacks to graze on. So we have you guys time for to get to replenish your snacks and then get into our team building conversation and hopefully get you out maybe a little earlier. So I'm going to put it out in the universe that maybe we can be done by 12. And if we have to extend till 1, we can do that, but we'll see how the conversation flows and what the group needs. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Let's see, ground rules, our rules for success yesterday. Just bring trust and positive intent to the discussions. Listen, honesty, that vulnerability, transparency and openness. Curiosity, getting to yes, so knowing that today we'll check in with that consensus or majority, make sure you guys are all on the same page with what you're moving forward. And then just bringing clarity, making sure, checking with the council to make sure you guys feel like you have good clarity on what you're directing staff and then checking in with staff as well to make sure that they're getting the clarity that they need to do their part of the work. All right, we good? Okay, well, what, any reflections after you left yesterday about day one?
Excited.
About the outcomes yesterday? Any desire, any additional desires for today or anything that we can improve on as we work through the process?
I have one. I am excited for the kind of refinement prioritization conversation because at the end of the day, I was thinking, are we getting towards what staff needs from us 30 years ahead? And I didn't feel like, I felt confident that we had gotten there. You know, I think we're making progress, but I would love to hear like, do we need to adjust? Are we getting to the right level? How are we feeling about like even just the number of things we're seeing? I know we're trying to narrow if we can, so that's kind of what I've been thinking about.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure to check in with the team today and see if they have the clarity that they need. Any others?
I was just going to add that I appreciate, I think we're largely aligned on our values as a council, but that doesn't always mean complete agreement. And I just appreciated especially when we disagreed yesterday and we had different thoughts like that we can do that and that like we can still laugh and have a good time after and we're still great friends. So I think that's the sign of a healthy relationship. And I just commend all of my fellow counselors for creating that space. And I just, I wanted to call that out publicly.
I cried afterwards. No, kidding. A good time, thank you.
The one thing that I would say that I think is missing maybe a little bit from yesterday to today, I had a few conversations with counselors departing. I think there's still maybe a little bit of misunderstanding of the goals we're bringing forward and how that is going to complement in the work that we're doing now. And so making sure we understand, we still have a lot of work on the work plan now. And so it's not like carte blanche, start over. And so I think we need to really be thinking about what's coming forward still because we did set a two-year plan last year and we're kind of updating it one year in and how it fits into kind of what we're doing now. And I think the city manager can help us kind of, I think in her mind, when she was talking yesterday, it was through that lens and our mind was like, let's start fresh lens. And so as I was reflecting a little bit last night, I think we still need to have, maybe when we get into a little bit more detail of this, like what's still coming forward? Because she hit on it, I just don't know if it hit home, that there's still ongoing work that we have to consider in our ongoing process.
Yeah, we've got a game plan to help make sure that everybody's clear on how things are being structured and bring that clarity. And then that way, it'll give you guys a good foundation for just additional discussion. We will work on that. Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, I guess the way I was thinking of it on reflection last night was looking at the current projects underway slide that you provided yesterday. That there's not a lot of room to shift into anything right now, but some of these things will be completed. And so what then gets added to the list? And that's why I've been thinking about the things that we identified yesterday is not that we're throwing anything out or that we're trying to cram more in, but as the opportunities present themselves to introduce new priorities, that they'll be naturally added into the mix when it makes sense to do so.
All right, any reflections? Hey. All right. Well, before we get into all of that, those are all, it's really helpful to know kind of where you are, and I think that we've got a plan to address that. And but let's do our warm-up first. You guys ready for a team challenge? So ready. Sasha's our retreat hype girl. Okay, so give it. Going to share, we're going to break you guys into three teams again. They're going to be a little different than yesterday. I wrote down what they were last night, so I'll find those in. Second one is the tango challenge. And scissors. You will have. This exercise. So as far as the teams. Counselor Tivnan, Bill, Glenn, which is not here today, Juliette. And making sure I got everybody. Let's see, and then team three. Susan. You. When you, then when I start the clock. When I start the clock, that is when you will take the cards out of the box. Yeah, it's going out. Sorry, guys. Everybody have, does everyone have a good workspace? Yeah, find your workspace. Yeah, you guys, whatever, is this working? Yeah. All right, so take your, take your plastic wrap off of your cards and I'm going to go ahead and start the timer on your mark. Get set, go. Yep, started the timer. Yes, you have five minutes. Yeah, do it on the table. Yeah. It's the actual size of the tower. Yep. Yeah, build a tower as tall as you can. That is your objective. I know. Only about high. Hey, you guys, just have about over two minutes remaining. Yeah, you guys have one minute and eight seconds remaining. Forty-five seconds. Twenty seconds. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. All right.
We have about fifteen and three quarters. Fifteen and fifteen and three quarters for team one. Team two. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't give any rules that said you couldn't. I, you guys have to interpret.
Okay, so. Tangerine challenge. Okay, so for the next one. We're going to give you guys seven minutes for this. Last time I gave the teams five and they were really mad because it is challenging. All right, so I'm going to give you a set of a tangerine puzzle and you guys have to figure out, there's a variety of designs on here, and so as many designs as you can achieve in seven minutes. Yeah, it doesn't have to stay in the box. Yeah, you have to take it out of the box in order to do the puzzle. So you have to create these shapes using the tangerine puzzles. So to verify it, yes, somebody should use their phone to take it, to snap a photo of it. Yeah. So snap a photo with your phones. Okay, does everyone have their puzzles? You do not? Okay, get situated and I'm going to start the timer here in just a moment. Wait till I say go. Okay, on your mark, get set, go. Don't forget, we'll need photo verification after you achieved your puzzle. Guys have about five minutes remaining. Yeah, all pieces go into each shape. Okay, you guys have just about three minutes remaining. You guys have two minutes. Okay, you guys have just over a minute. Okay, you guys have 30 seconds left. Doing great. All right, time's up. Time's up. Okay, group one, how many did you guys get? You guys got one? You guys got one? How many did you guys have? Two, okay, our group over, group three had two. Prove it. We'll see, we'll see the photos. Yes, we'll chat, Sasha will verify your photos. While Sasha verifies, let's explain challenge number three, third quarter here. We've got a set of tinker toys and everybody's set is the same. Inside, there's a picture of the instructions. Oh, verify your winnings. Okay. They definitely won. Okay. So in the bag are the tinker toys. Everybody's are the same. And there's also a photo of what you need to construct. The rules are for this, there are very specific rules for this one. Only two people on the team can touch the toys and the rest of the team has to instruct on how to build. So they can't see. So, so somebody, so some of the team members, so the people who are touching the toys cannot see, obviously cannot see the illustration. All right, so decide who are going to be the two people on your team to be your builders and then the rest of you have to communicate the instructions. And the object is the team who gets, who builds it the fastest is the winner. That's how we'll score you. So we'll, we'll set the timer and then whoever completes it first wins the challenge. Okay. On your mark, get set, go. Yeah. Done? Two twenty-five. Did you guys done two? Two twenty-six. All right, two twenty-five, two twenty-six. Yeah. Maybe we may, maybe it's a tie. All right. Can we get a, can we get a playback? Can we get instant replay, please? All right. All right, so team, we had team one on that one for, for the win. Okay, so the last one. Last challenge, are you guys ready for this? Well, we promised to have some good music. So step it up. Three members of the team, you guys have to choreograph a dance essentially. So three members, so three, you have to have three dance steps. You have to teach your team, so it just has to be like one step, so it could be like, you know. Yeah, you're gonna, Sasha, do you have a song for them, so that they know the beat? So, you need three dance steps. The whole team has to do it in sync. And again, this is a time challenge, so the first team to have their team, Sasha, Ashley and I are going to be monitoring, we'll be reffing each one. So we will be reffing each one, and the first team to successfully do their dance in sync together will be our winners. Three steps, you have to come up with three steps. All right. This is your song. Okay, on your mark, get set, go. One minute. Okay, all right. One. No more practicing, okay, now you all have to come to the center and you have to do it. All together now. Okay. Sasha, do you have the video of this one?
I know. Team three.
Okay. All right. No more chor, no more choreographing now. We already have your time, so now each team has to go ahead and execute their dance. So, it's performance, performance time. This is, this is like the halftime show, the finale. Okay, ready? Okay, we've got our first, Sasha, we have our music on. All right, go. Five, six, seven, eight. All right, great job, team two. All right, next team. Who's up next? Okay, go, take it away, team. Debbie, all right, you guys do it here. This is their stage. All right, ready? Five, six, seven, eight. Okay. All right, last team, let's see it. That's all right. Okay, you guys ready? Five, six, seven, eight. I know, I think we gotta give it to team two, they were the best choreographed, yes. Okay. I did check with Jenny before I launched that this morning, so she approved it. Team three, well, yeah, you guys were team three, yes. What? Do we have a tie? We have plenty of prizes. What is our, what's our tally here? Wait, 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 no, 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 no. No, 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 team three, team three. Oh, they won the, they won the, yes, yes, so they won the dance. And then tinker toy, it was. They won it. And then, let's see. So, how about, how about we just, how about we just have a tie and you guys all get prizes? All right? Okay, so for, for our, for our prizes, you guys get to pick something. Pick something from the prize box. So we have really fun pens in here and fidget toys. There's five dollar Starbucks gift, yeah, Starbucks gift cards. So everybody take one. You like squeeze it, it's. Isn't that fun? Yeah, go for it. Starbucks gift cards, those are like fun notepads. The fidget things are pretty fun. All right, okay. Did you get your prize? Make sure you get the important part. Did you get a prize? So you get, there's like some. That is like, yeah, it's like a little notebook, a multi notebook. You're welcome. Fun pen, it's got a level in it. Yeah, and a screwdriver. It's a four and one pencil. The ruler, yeah. Yeah, all right. Awesome. Okay. How was that? Did you guys have fun? Ready for a nap now after all that dancing? No fun at all, zero fun? I think there were some people online watching and they were sending some comments and said it was really fun watching you guys, yeah. A couple, a couple of staff members who were tuning in this morning. So we'll have, we'll have the videos, we'll give them to Jenny, so she'll have all the stuff if you guys want to post anything. But just like debriefing from the team challenges. How, how was the first one, doing poker tower? What was your experience like doing that?
That cheated. By using the wall.
Okay, but you guys, no, but thinking about that, I didn't give any specific rules. I said you get a deck of cards and a pair of scissors, build the tallest tower. And, and some people got creative, and so sometimes in some environments, that's what happens.
When you have the mayor on the team, whatever it takes to win. And that's what we did. And I'm sorry that you guys just like are rule followers, but I do want you to know that right out of the gate, one of our code people were like, hey, wait a minute, like, we gotta know all the rules in building. We swiftly kicked her off the team.
We swiftly kicked them out?
They wanted us to pull a permit.
Yeah, and we just denied.
Well, just to be clear, we moved to the dais because we thought that you meant the tallest tower. Not depending on where it started, but someone on our team checked with you.
So you started to cheat and then got mad that you're cheating, wasn't cheating enough.
That's correct, that's correct.
From the ruler would start at the base of the cards, yeah.
But, but somebody on my team confirmed.
Okay, but yeah, clarifying, clarifying the rules and also thinking creatively. What about tango?
I hate geometry.
It's hard.
Everyone wanted to touch them at the same time to try and put them together. When you, you're mentally working it out in your head of what it might be, but everyone's mentally working it out a little differently. Yes, and, and trying to like redo something someone just put down and.
Yeah, it's kind of like goal setting or budgeting. Trying to put the pieces together.
I think it highlights the need for multidisciplinary teams, like we've had engineers. You know, like it didn't seem like it wasn't our expertise.
Way too many lawyers on the team. Yeah, we did, there was a, there was a group recently that there were a couple engineers in the group and they like nailed the tinker toy and poker tower challenge. It was one of the better ones I've ever seen.
So I will say about this one, I think this is when our team started to get an advantage on the fourth round because a couple of our team members started getting distracted and started dancing. And so I think we started getting some practice.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, leadership, and sometimes you need some team encouragement. All right, and then what, what do we have next, tinker toy?
Well, our CDD director kindly said, I do this for a living, so step out. And any, any good mayor is like, all right, you got this, and then she, that's it, so. We just stood, but, but in true mayor credit, I take credit for the victory.
And she dances.
All right, and then last one, how, what was your experience putting your, choreographing your dance? Yeah, yeah, all right.
It brought me back to trying desperately to learn the running man and not succeeding in sixth grade.
Well, the videos of those are really amazing.
No, not succeeding. I never quite mastered that.
I know the exercises are silly and get us laughing and stuff, but the stuff that happens in those little challenges happen every day in the work that you guys do together. So, I hope that you learned a few lessons about working, working together and things about your teammates to employ as you start to launch into your goals. All right. Well, with that, thanks for, thanks for having fun with that this morning. Let's go ahead and shift, Sasha, help me shift the agenda and we'll get into the goal review. All right, so, yesterday, we left off with this mix of ideas over here and started refining them into those priorities as well as some really specifics. And then, then after that, I was reflecting on with Jenny on like the goal structure that currently exists. So I think one of the things that's important is to make sure we're all talking, using the same language when we talk about this structure. And so, you guys have eight goal areas currently. So I've got those listed up here at the top. And what I understand is that that has provided a really helpful framework to the organization as far as just helping people, helping the departments to organize their work and also be able to organize the council's priorities under those things. And so, yesterday, you came up, so in purple, I have the priorities that you highlighted. So there were six of them. And then some of the ideas that came underneath of them. So these would be the goal areas that exist, the new council priorities. And then some of the, some of the ways that those would get accomplished. So these would be things that would show up in the work plan that Jenny puts together. And so, I just think it's important to make sure we're all using the same language when we talk about goals versus priorities versus work plan items. And Jenny, I know you had some thoughts on how the work plan items would mesh with what's, what currently is on the work plan. And that was a question you guys had, and a reflection you had this morning of like, how is this all going to fit together with current capacity and budget allocations and those things? So Jenny will talk a little more about that.
Yeah, so a couple of ideas and I guess maybe just kind of setting considerations is, so, all the approaches that will be taken in consideration to support your priority areas are going to be contingent upon kind of basically two things. One, budget, right, available resources, which we're in the process of doing now and creating scenarios. And then the other is organizational capacity. And so a couple of things to just note, with respect to capacity, there are several items that are on your work plan right now, the existing one, that is, are tying up capacity. And they're also externally funded. So those are the ones where when I say kind of like the train has left the station, those are the ones that are still going to run concurrent to everything. And so what my job will be is to look at all of the available capacity and see what I can do with some of those priority areas and then some of the suggested outcome areas that you've identified under there. And I'll present a work plan based on what I think we're going to have from a budgetary resource allocation availability to support those, and then taking in consideration all of the capacity that I have. And I just want to set the table of expectations that we have things like the Loop TSP nonprofit incubator and shelter in particular that are externally funded that are taking a considerable amount of bandwidth. But that doesn't mean that we can't figure out how to get some of this stuff already done. And the reason why it's important for you to know is many of the players, they, they cross pollinate these, these different projects, right? So we rely on a lot of the same people for this. So those are the things that I'm going to have to push up against to put together a work plan for you. So I think it's really important to just know that the filtering process in which your recommended plan will be, will be determined based on resources and existing capacity. And I, that's what I want to set the table with for today. So I want to pause there because I'm sure that there are some other questions and thoughts that you have with respect to that.
Before, before you guys launch into questions, one other thing visually, I was like, oh no, they're going to see these big gaps up here and that we didn't highlight any ideas in those areas. But just keep in mind that you've already got a lot of work happening in those areas. So that's, there's still, you're still advancing those goals.
Yeah, that's, oh, thank you for reminding me. So I, when I was talking with Sarah, so all of those, kind of the higher level, the ones with the red dots, those goal areas, that lens of work is, that's how staff looks at their work when they're doing everyday, day-to-day operational things and they're trying to make sure that they're incorporating those kind of goals into the way that they do their work. So that was kind of an important piece. And then, yeah, you're right, operationally, all of those things are getting done at one level or another. So we don't want folks to feel like the need that they have to put something underneath like economic prosperity or quality infrastructure, because there's work underway on that.
And so just so we're clear on how these are organized, so I put the multi, I read through those themes again last night to make sure that it, as I understood them and as you guys moved through your discussion yesterday, trying to figure out where the alignment was. So multicultural center felt like it fit under the welcoming community piece. Good government was this organizational stability as well as financial health. The safe streets, I was, when I initially looked at it, I was like, well, is that infrastructure? Is it safety? And it really, when you read the description about safety, it fit here. And then housing was pretty clear, was under housing. And then environmental sustainability, so the conversation you guys had around the tree canopy. Fit there.
Can I, just clarifying question, because I, goals, priorities, can you just re-explain that? I just want to write it down so I remember.
Yeah, so overarching goals, the lens through which the organization does the day-to-day work as well as the overarching goals for the community that the council wants to create.
The top one.
Top one, yep. And then priorities are in purple. Work plan items are in blue. So when we get to the prioritization exercise, you guys would be prioritized. So when we get to the prioritization exercise, you guys would be prioritizing the things in purple.
I was thinking maybe community wellness and fund could go under welcoming community. Does it have to be separate priority?
An older, like, so those top, for, for the new folks, the top eight.
Same thing.
Well, no, it's just a year ago when we had our council retreat, that's what we had decided on. So I'm not saying that we couldn't, I'm just letting, giving that call.
But we also committed last year to a two-year plan, just like we're doing now. And so if we shift all of the other things on Jenny's list, like we're gonna, I think, cause instability in the organization that is using this as their, their guidepost now.
Okay.
Is that how? Yeah.
I mean, the bulk of it is some of this stuff, you, you can't shift because it's, it's externally funded. And so we've got federal and state dollars tied to it. So it's really, my, my goal is to try to figure out how do I balance that capacity wise? And also create a work plan that is not as top-heavy as, as last year's. And I, and I think based on what you've got here, I think I can do that. And so I'm, I feel really good about the level of input that you've given so far, where I think I'm already mapping out what I think is feasible. And my goal is to not have something that has 22, but that is a more reasonable, feasible deliverable for you.
One thing really quickly to clarify on the differences between the two, my understanding is welcoming communities is that every person who lives in Beaverton or visits it feels welcome here, that we're creating an environment where people feel equally cared for, supported, and, and also removing roadblocks around systemic racism, increasing opportunity for economic prosperity or getting involved with the city. And then community wellness and fun is more around the events and the gatherings and, you know, the tree lighting or incorporating new cultural traditions and things like that.
All right, yeah, question. Oh, Council Duggar had this.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, a newbie question for Jenny, I think. So we have last year's priorities, which I'm, I'm fully on board with continuing to support it. It doesn't make sense that completely change. I think most of us, or maybe all of us, we add these. We clearly have our federal and state mandates. How do we, like, it feels like, other than basic operational stuff, there are some relics of the old government or programs, like how do those surface so we can actually deprioritize them and create capacity for staff to work on the things that we want from this year and last year? Like.
I think it would be helpful because I've heard that a few times over the last couple of weeks. The old government wasn't only Jenny. The old government was the council that also decided to move some of these, like the nonprofit incubator. And so I think we have to, for me to truly understand, I need to know what exactly you're talking about because just like a council five years from now, they can't unwind all the work that we've been doing and just say, well, you're out and I'm in. And so when we say that, what is the relic of the old form of government that you're exactly talking about?
And I think part of it, you guys talked a lot about yesterday and this, this good government and the organizational stability and some of the assessments that would happen as a result of that, I think is, is probably, when you were, I just hearing what you said, Council Duggar, about gaining efficiencies, I think some of that is going to come out of this work.
Okay.
Jenny, anything you want to add to that?
Well, I, I mean, there's, there's some obvious examples to me, like, like some of the community engagement stuff you've brought up, like the parades and things like this that we're actively supporting from a staff, like, like, and those are really easy, visible stuff, but like, I, I just want to make sure that, like, if, if it's not obvious, like that we're thinking about, like, just because we've always done something, like, do we always have to do it if it doesn't connect to council priorities, federal mandates, state mandates? Like, good government, good governance stuff, good government efficiency, basic water, sewer, you know, that sort of stuff, I just don't want to assume that we should continue to do them.
That is an excellent point and that is coming up as a part of kind of the scrubbing of the budget and we are questioning some of those things. And I will, when I start to identify more deeply some of the organizational, either, you know, how we constrain the budget a little bit or service, kind of rolling up services, those are things that I'm going to come to the sustainability committee on, but we are talking about those type of things and because we need to, yeah.
Council Hartmeyer.
Yeah, my question was definitely related and, you know, yesterday we started talking in the framing of must-do, should-do, nice to haves, use different language, but I can't remember them. So I think that I would love that lens in your work plan, right? If, if you can highlight the, those things that, the, the must-dos, I think that like, that's what we got to focus on for the coming year when we're going into this year of boring, is like, the must-dos are really the ones that like shouldn't shift, but do we have either like, you know, slowing things down? Are there things we actually, you recommend, we just do not continue doing based on all of the factors? So I think that would be something that would be interesting because I still see, like, some of these things are already represented on the work plan. And so then I feel like, okay, we're not adding something new with that. But some of these things are new and we've been talking a lot about trying not to add new. So I think for me to feel good about this, which when I look at this, I see really high priority things, I would want us to be creating that space to allow room for them to come onto the plan.
Sarah, I'm curious if we go through a prioritization process, whether we come, we bring kind of what Ashley's point is to the, the lens of, do we, do we organize these in a way of essential, important and nice to have? Because I certainly can bring, I will bring the budget to you in that context as well as making a note of how your work plan measures up to that. But I'm just curious if we do a prioritization exercise, whether that makes sense.
To do, to do it or not do it?
No, to look at it through that lens to help guide the discussion.
I mean, we could encourage the council to look at it through that lens as they assign their priorities and then have discussion around that. Council Hassan.
Yeah, I, you were asking earlier about thoughts and impressions and reflection and I did feel like we didn't cover every one of the goals yesterday because we didn't. Some things made it up on the board that fell under, repeatedly under one category, some didn't have any at all. And I, I think that might be because we already have a lot going on in those areas, like community wellness. We've got the First Street Dining Commons, Bookmobile, we've got a community library, little libraries and like there's, and, and all the different events and programs and, and stuff like that and participation from the boards and commissions on it. And you could say the same for like quality infrastructure and economic prosperity because of the ARPA funds and because of the focuses on those areas. But I, I figure we should probably talk about that as a group because they are lacking. Does that mean it's all full systems go in those areas? And they don't need any modification or discussion?
I think when Jenny and I talked about how to approach today's exercises was that it would, bringing all of those projects into, like, into this framework today versus during, I mean, it'll come up during your budget process. And that's, that was kind of how we, if you brought it up all today, it felt like we could get too in the weeds and trying to get delved into each individual project and priority. So that will, it would be helpful to know from the council out of the things that they've identified here, which ones are the highest priorities because that gives Jenny some meaningful data as she goes to put the budget together. That was the thinking behind it. We could get, we could go deeper if you guys felt like you're ready for that.
And I think some things are going to require a lot more staffing than other, right? Traffic calming, really like getting all of the like policies for this form of government, how we're operating, that is massive bodies of work. And so I think it's hard, it's hard to rack and stack only against what's important to me as the mayor versus where is the capacity in the organization to pick up additional work? Because mostly what I see here is a lot of the same two departments.
Yeah, I mean, I think where, where I need that space is kind of to the mayor's point because I can tell you where the bandwidth is and where it's not. And then I can come up with reasonable deliverables that I think that we can achieve based on that bandwidth. And I, I can't underscore that, you know, if something ends up being, you know, essential and it's related to code, that is a tremendous body of work, like what the mayor was saying. So then that limits my capacity to figure out, because I'm a part of this body of work too. So I have to figure out how, you know, even myself and Bill, how we work into that as well. And so, yeah, that's what I, I guess that would be my ask of you is to allow me to have that space, but to really focus on, I'd like to hear from you on these things, what raises, that comes to the top so that I can have that framework going in and then I will find that, that way to make that happen for you.
And I guess my last kind of point on this topic is some of the stuff that count, like, you know, Council Duggar is talking about, like the parade and all that, that's a very, like a division that's not represented here. And so we might think like we're creating bandwidth, but in reality, we're, we're, we're not. We're not impacting the like high, good governance, community wellbeing because the staff doing those things are often temporary and we could say budgetary money, but you couldn't take the advanced manager and be like, okay, now you're going to come over here and write rules and procedures. So I think it's probably not a good exercise for us to start thinking about what we can shove off the bottom of the list and let the city manager come back and say, if you want these things, this is how I have to rack and stack and redo them.
Yeah, when you go back to that diagram back there, the Venn diagram of policy and administration, like right now, you guys are setting those pri, you already have your goals, you're setting the priorities. And then Jenny's going to go back and do that work on the other side, which is aligning those goals with the resources. And then bring it back to the policy side to approve the budget. And you might have some ad packages or, you know, shifting packages, I'm not sure what you call cut packages or whatever that might look like when you get to that decision point.
Yeah, I was in the queue and then I got lost. And I, I just hear two things, right? The big stuff, which is this, and then some of the other stuff, which is different. And I think maybe you and I get the privilege to sit on fiscal sustainability, so we'll, we'll kind of get it. And maybe we're more passionate about it, so then we'll be able to address it. So I think, like, we definitely want to make sure we're talking about this. But if there are things that councillors feel about, like the budget, make sure you're probably sharing it with Jenny because I think the fiscal sustainability team is working through that, through this process.
So I want to just clarify, the role of the sustainability committee is really to be kind of like that sounding board for policy and for where there's probably maybe a community appetite, right? And so you have a pulse check of the community and that's what I need to hear from you. I will keep the rest of the council kind of informed about the direction that I'm headed, the themes, things like that. And you all are really good in the one-on-one conversations of giving me that individual feedback. So, so there will be that communication. But you, you as a committee really play that core role in going, yeah, on a scale of one to 10, that's a one Jenny, you know, and this is a nine. And I need that feedback as I put together a recommended budget for you. But everybody will be connected in terms of progress where we're at in the direction that I'm headed, even though you may not be sitting on the committee. So please know that you will get updates from me on that.
Other, other questions on structure? Does this feel, are you guys comfortable with this? Again, I think it's providing really good direction to the organization and maintaining some stability and consistency there while also bringing in the priorities that you're interested in. Well, thinking about what you guys, thinking about what you guys want, let's, let's get into the multicultural center.
I'm gonna need to add, add a line item though for, for cannon bombs and things like that now, so.
Confetti and maybe confetti, confetti cleanup, the, the maintenance that comes with confetti bombs.
And someone to pick it out of my hair.
All right, are you guys ready to get into multicultural center?
Jenny, so I think for me and for people that might watch this, can you just, so we're making a two-year plan, which is modifying an existing two-year plan. Can you talk about how things that might change in the next year or two can help us pivot on? I know we're very high level right now, but, but like some of the strategies, like if all of a sudden federal money becomes available for one of these and it's not in the work plan, but it's a priority, like how that will change or like we can respond and be nimble with our plan? Can you just talk just very high level, like for, for my edification and for people that might be watching, like?
Well, and, and I, I kind of want to channel the, the mayor a little bit on this too because, you know, for federal money to come from the sky, it's probably going to be rare. But in the event that we have an approach that adds to that, I mean, the pivoting is that there's going to be a public process in which we would bring kind of a status update to you and tell you how we can either add that, modify that and how that might open up a possible bandwidth for something else. I think Counselor Tibnon asked about, how do we create that space? So the process for that would be a public meeting and I would have to discuss that and get direction. So I, I don't know, Mayor, if you want to add to that.
I would just say, you know, I, I have a couple of national leadership roles with US Conference mayors and what we advocate for, for coming from the federal government to cities right now is mostly infrastructure. And we see infrastructure through like the Inflation Reduction Act and some of the stuff we're already doing. I'll tell you, it's been our practice of our government relations committee. Well, first, before I say that, we have to get out of the idea that money is going to come, fall out of the sky. This is not ARPA, this isn't all the other things that are happening. Governments from the federal government, we're hitting the debt ceiling. Like, we have to get into the idea that we're not going to get bailed out. And we collectively, the seven of us, have to look through that lens of the budget. There's no one coming to drop money on top of us. What I push the staff constantly to think about is what can I go get money for that's in the plan now to lighten the fiscal burden of the organization versus going out to find new money? Now, if, if I'm pretty clued in, if some pocket becomes available, like, of course, we're going to pivot and look that direction. But with the fiscal cliff we're hitting right now, what I'm trying to do is double down on things we're already doing to create the, the office staff. And that's going to be around housing, that's going to be around homelessness, that's going to be around some of the public safety stuff we're talking about. But I, I don't feel as good as I did with ARPA, that money was going to come in and rescue from us. But we have our eyes and ears on the ground. And I mean, right now, I'm telling you, it's, it's not super sexy. It's water, it's purple pipe, it's ASR wells, it's, you know, getting solar panels for our buildings to reduce our, our lift. When I was in DC a couple of weeks ago, texting Jenny about LED light conversion, like I think there's a path for some of that. And so, but that reduces the overall burden on the city if we can get LED lights. So that, that's the framework that I think government relations is turning right now because we're responding to what the government is doing. And it doesn't matter sometimes what we want, it's what's coming out the other end.
Okay, good, good discussion. Ready, multicultural center? You guys had some time to reflect on it last night. So let's just go around and hear from each of you as far as what, what reflections, what you thought about last night. We left it yesterday with potentially three directional items for staff and one was, you know, we need to understand the needs and gaps, which would come forth in a needs assessment. We also talked about this, is the city a regional convener? Or are, are funds being allocated to another organization to, to start that work? And then we also talked about there's an older feasibility study, but maybe a new one that might, would, like, we need to be completed sometime in the future. So those were some of the ideas that we're surfacing yesterday that you guys were going to reflect on. Anybody, any volunteers to start us off?
I can go first and I will, full disclosure, Council Community and I had chatted a little, like, what does this look like so that we can provide more clarity? And we were like, we should email it. And then we were like, are we allowed to email it? So we didn't. So I'm going to read off a little bit, just in terms of just the vision and, and what we've heard. And, and I'm going to say this because I, I posit feasibility study and needs assessment because we have actually talked to quite a few people. And I know you have too, and we'd be happy to take some of that feedback. I think the first priority is a culturally specific center for events and event planning. An example would be that when I go to an Indian party at a hotel, they don't serve Indian food because they don't. And so we have to always work with these caterers and restaurants that don't provide those things. If I could dream, it also would eventually become an office space for organizations that provide services. That's kind of the phase two in my head, so other services that are provided. And then when I get really visionary and, and dreamy, I think of business advisory support services for our communities of color who don't always come to some of our traditional groups. I think our hope is just to start with the first one, that culturally specific center. I'd like for us to be a regional convener and really go in that direction. I do think that finalizing an organization to have a partnership with to help lead that, I don't think that the city is going to have the capacity to, to make something like this happen. And we've got good governance, which is a really important priority that we need to focus on and I'm okay with that. I think the last thing that I would say is, while I know multicultural center at this moment sits under welcoming community, I think it sits under economic prosperity and I think it sits under community wellness and fun and that's simply because. community wellness and fun. And that's simply because the spaces that our kids get to be in are different than the spaces that your kids get to be in. And so that sense of belonging that you're able to give people in this community by having this kind of a space, it does build economic prosperity for those families, because we know that the research shows that pay equity is an issue in this country and that I won't do the statistics, but you know, some of the statistics. So like that happens. Um, and I also think that it leads to community wellness and fun. I was chatting with someone from Portland in the AAPI community, and they were talking about the AAPI gang issue, which I have never heard of. And it brought me back to what I know is foundational, which is that people sometimes miss this sense of belonging. And sometimes that belonging ends up in the wrong place and maybe not in the place that we want our kids. And so that's a lot. So hopefully that helps.
Can you just, you've mentioned in your vision, three, three points. It was about a culture, culturally specific event center, office space for organizations that provide service. And can you just say the third one?
There you go. Yeah, like a so business, like business support. And I it could be, I mean, this is very like, and then, yeah, and just for context, like councillor Kim and I have talked to a lot of people. So we have a like a further list of things. And so we're happy to share that. Bill will tell me what the rules are to do that eventually.
I have a follow-up question, councillors, Hudson and Kimmy. Um, when you say culturally specific, that to me says like, I want a center for Indian people to gather, or I want a space for Korean people to gather. But is it really one place, but just that culturally specific events feel welcome there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Duggar, what reflections from you?
Yeah, um, number one, that was really helpful. Actually, I think it's clarifying in my mind, like a 1.0 and a 2.0 and a 3.0. And like this vision of where we get there to answer the questions. I do, I I I reflected a lot on the whether we're the convener. And I think uh, I think to the mayor's point earlier, our role is largely going to be to try and go out and get some funding for groups. And I think based on her advice, I think we have to be the convener. Doesn't mean we can't form an innovative partnership as part of that, but it probably should be central to this body. Yeah. I, and and as far as the other, the feasibility study and needs assessment, if that's what's required to get us that future funding, even if it's more of a paperwork thing or an official thing we have to do, like I would support that. Is meaningful for steps in getting to the 1.0 that councillor Hudson talked about. You know, I I would support this being on the priorities. And I think it's it's an important, you know, if we can accomplish a needs assessment, feasibility study and be the convener of conversations and in coordination and partnerships, we talked about with potentially the Parks District, you know, the school, a number of others. I think that's that's a pretty big win, putting us on the right pathway to get this done in the in the in the coming years. So I support it.
Let let me jump before Alison here, because uh, listening to councillor Hassan's actually changed my position. Uh, what I appreciate is that that is what councillor Hassan has been saying the whole time. But that is counter to what you've been telling me, which is not the events face spurs, but the immigrant refugee. And so if this is the order, I don't think government can be the lead convener, because it's not a government responsibility to create a place for weddings and stuff of that nature. And so I would say at this juncture, I would support, if that is the order that we're going to agree, I think an outside agency is the person to hold that conversation, not not us. I was looking at it more through the lens of what I've been hearing, which is uh, immigrant refugee center. That's what DAB has been coming to me and saying, which is why I thought we should be the center focus. If this is more around community gathering space, I don't think that is our role to hold that middle of the conversation. In that place, I would support moving that 70,000 to an outside agency. Because for something to be cheap, to host the events you're talking about, we definitely can't do it, because if THPRD is too expensive, if the research is too expensive, our involvement will cause it to go through the roof versus where I think our role would be is taking the money to seed it. And so I would change my my opinion based on what councillor Hassan's saying today. And I would be happy to support an outside agency taking that work. And we could use our our lobbying ability to help, but it would be very difficult for me as the mayor to go ask for money from other government agencies for those purposes. Now, if it if they had that and expand into a phase two capacity, I think we could come back in and I could help raise money. But that initial lens is going to make it I'm I'm just, you know, in our our bodies yesterday of like, respect the expertise, I'm telling you right now, that is not a role that I could play with other governments. Which I think is great, because I think if that's, if this is the direction you guys agree to, I think it's easier to say an outside agency, which is, I would support that.
Let's hear from others on the the vision. So.
Um, councillor Kimmy, can you weigh in too on on? Because it it sounds like there's a need being called out by the community. You've heard it through your work on the diversity advisory board, you're hearing it through your connections. What are your, what are your thoughts on what is the thing in the middle that everyone desires?
I've been thinking about, thinking about it a lot, because we hear everything, right? The reason that we have a lot of questions is that as a city, we haven't really done any work on it. Nobody has worked on it. Nobody has sat down and thought through it. We are thinking here, but we don't have enough time to think about it, right? So reason that we came up with events space and services is that that's all needed. But I think it's uh, we as a staff in the city has to have some kind of committee, some kind of thing that's going that we can find a way to provide the event space and also serve services. We already have plenty of services around, and there's community organizations who serve their community today. Right? So yes, the service is being done, Oracle, Apano, Unite, KSO, Afghani, it's being done, as long as we can support them financially a little bit, the work can keep going. But all, if you come down to, if you ask them, they want, they want the space that they could gather. And as a city, we don't have a clear map of how we're going to get there, but I want to, I want us to put that as a priority and have a staff start working on it and have spent energy and mental energy and get it together. And that's the direction I want to go. We are such an early stage. Oh. Reason I bring up Reeser was the reason I was an idea, it was want, right? And things got momentum and a lot of people got into it and started it. But it started from the city, right? We wanted this thing done, found the way, right? Mark, councillor Mark Begon was able to get funding through lodging tax. And maybe that got us across the line. But I'm trying to find a way to get there. And this has, and that I want that to be our priority in a city sense.
It's important to know that the Reeser wasn't a city project. It was outside people led by Pat Reeser and a $13 million lift gift. And once they started clearing the way, and then the city's involvement came. And so I think what councillor Hassan is saying is that she wants it to start in the community. What I'm saying is there could be a path to us doing it, but the Reeser did not start from the council dais. It started from community organizations that raised a significant amount of money. So the city could come in and partner with it, but it wasn't like a city goal or a priority. It was actually quite what councillor Hassan is suggesting right now is the origins of how that came to be. Then we worked through the idea of TLT and funding, because we figured like we had to come in with a second piece of it.
So that's why we could be a convener and try to get it going and have people come together and achieve it. It can start something, meaningful first step has to be done by somebody, right? Well, one thing I can tell you is that if if city can donate certain land, I bet KSO could just build a building. Right? What I'm saying is there's a lot of possibilities out there and everybody's looking for direction. And I think we are in a unique situation where we don't have to do all the work. We don't have to figure out all the funding that you will come together. Night market started because two of us were talking, hey, let's bring a night market. Okay, then it was such a success. It's just an idea. So same thing, so something that we can put it there. And I believe in miracles. Once you put it down and have going, I became a city councillor because like, oh, why not? Right? I got one phone call, okay, why not? Then all of a sudden, I'm a city councillor, miracles happened. Of course, there's a lot of people who came and helped me out. So I believe, not in miracle per se, but then there's a lot of want there, there's energy there. And as when we, when we lead, we don't have to do all the work. There's going to be so many people out there who wants it done. And that's what and it's a significant landmark and success and a story that we can tell probably a few years down the road that we started this, you know? Uh, and that's a win for everybody, I think, in our community. That's what, that's what I think. I know you you operate in a way that like, I want to get this successful. I want to get this. How can I get funding? But um, but I personally don't worry about it. I think it's going to be there. It's going to be successful. That's why.
All right, let's hear. Um, I just want to make sure the other voices are and perspectives are present in the conversation. You started with a question, but I'm sure you have some additional thoughts.
And I've had a sneeze on deck for like 15 minutes now. So sorry, I'm getting extra stuffy. Well, I I go back to thinking about the community center we currently have that's being used as the severe weather shelter. And um, I got a little bit of history on how that came about. And the services that were provided, like there's tax services that are provided out of that building. There was two different event spaces, a kitchen in between them, courtyard. It was the the way in which it was laid out was not really functional for today's purposes, but it was definitely built to do a lot of different things and to be able to be reprogrammed depending on what the need was from the community wanting to use it. And I, to me, I I I think what the way I look at it is we're creating a place for our community to gather in all of the different cultures that encompasses that and to create the space for that. Uh, I, is there a way to thread the needle to make this a part of good governance, community wellness? To me, it seems like it fits enough of these buckets that we could be the convener and create the center of gravity where it exists in Beaverton, but is also used by folks in Aloha and Hillsborough and Portland and, you know, Bethany and whatnot. So I I still, I see this as a community center. But I guess I have gaps in my knowledge on what it looks like for a city to get involved in creating community centers, rec centers. But you know, is that THPRD? Is it parks? It, you know, so someone is responsible for creating places for people to gather and learn about each other and celebrate and you know, so that's, that's where my head lands on this. I'm learning as I go.
Councillor Hartman, please.
So there's, there's not agreement. I'm not hearing consensus amongst the group on what this is. I'm hearing the city should be a convener, but in different capacities. So either we want to give funding for our community to take off and to kind of be the champion, or we want to have a more concrete role in this and it, and we're not going to give money, but we're going to pursue a needs assessment or whatever that mechanism is to determine the what, because I think you have to recognize that people are saying very different things. And do you, is this a community center for for all? Because that is a very different thing that you want to provide versus something that is more organically grown up from the, from the um, community and it is more culturally specific. So and then who is getting the money? Because that's going to change, that's going to change the mayor's direction in terms of how she can lobby money, right? Whether this is a city project, whether this is a community homegrown project, and you're going to be allocating money to a community partner, your role is going to be very different in that capacity than it is if you're going to be in the driver's seat. So you either agreed that you're going to be in the passenger seat, or you're going to be in the driver's seat on this, if I could give you an analogy. And I'm hearing a couple of different things here.
I think that's why I'm kind of struggling with like, what is the the right next step? But to me, like councillor Hudson, I hear you in terms of like what we've heard from our community. And I think what we've heard is there is a need. But I'm still struggling with the what. And so I still feel like the, I don't know if it, like what the right mechanism, if that's needs assessment or feasibility study, or can we dust off the old one and like just revisit it. But to me, it seems like it's worthwhile to do a little bit more of that discovery around what is it? And that will maybe give us an information to say we need to find the right partner to lead it. And we can be supportive and, you know, like, and as a council, maybe there's a point where we are saying, and we're going to commit some money to it, right? But I I'm I'm definitely struggling with this, because I feel a little bit more confused than I did at the end of day yesterday about where we're going. And so that's why I'm wondering if like, is there, and and someone knows better than I that it's like, not even either of these tools? I don't know, but it seems like we need something kind of tangible to to wrap our heads around, to be able to decide what is the thing that we do to like, put something into action? That's just where I am.
Councillor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification after councillor Hudson and Kimmy. I support that that vision and and kind of the step-by-step process. Uh, I think starting with the community space is really great first step as far as like outcomes to be shooting for, to be aiming for. As far as city being the convener or city giving funds to it, um, I'm also thinking about this from the perspective of maybe it's not even, doesn't even necessarily have to be funds that we send. But if we can be a part of the conversation, and again, I Jenny, I I'm a little frustrated too, because I'm I'm playing that that line of the process through my head of like, are we driving or are we the passenger? And I'm not, I'm not sure myself yet. That said, I do think the city has property or bureau has property that could be a potential partnership opportunity with some of these community organizations that are really pushing for and driving the work. Like, maybe it's not us giving funding, but maybe it's us supporting with making property available so that other community organizations can really focus their energies on a specific area of land and raising money themselves. And then later on, we come in at the end or something and seed some more or wherever we fit and fund with financially with the process. I'm not sure. And again, transparency, I am on the board of Wake Up Beaverton. As I come into these conversations, I'm not coming into them being like, we need to give this specific organization funding. But I want the right people leading it. And I, it depends on if staff has capacity and.
Okay, I I want, I want, I want to um, step in and give you a suggestion. So given that we don't, we can't answer the question of who's, you know, who's really kind of driving this and who's in the passenger seat, I would recommend that we collectively move forward with the needs assessment to determine the what and have the data and come back so that we can determine what role the convener looks like for us as a city and what role you want the community to be in. Right now, we have a feasibility study that I looked at that is over a decade old. And I know, I know that intuitively a many of you know some of this stuff, right? And and it's in your pocket. But when we go to get funding, I I need metrics, I need data, I got to back it up. And so that's going to help us to find this really thorny question of what is it that we're trying to achieve? Um, and then we'll determine whether we need more information. But I think once we have that, we can come together and figure out what this next step looks like, whether we want to be an active passenger or whether we want to be an active driver. And I think that that would be really helpful if you could tell me right now whether you're comfortable with that, because if you want to show progress, I I need that direction today so that we can come back and define this thing really clearly, because we clearly aren't going to be able to do it today. But I feel like we're at, we do not have the information we need in order to clearly make that decision. Um, and I would recommend that we use the 75 for that. If we end up needing to go and and bring in a community partner and there's additional funds, we will figure this out if this is a priority. Um, and it sounds like it is for this group. So I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about us stalling and just kind of floundering. And so that's that's just like kind of my hard and fast recommendation.
I can support that. But before we go to that, my thinking is that I understand the driver-passenger analogy. And I think could the city be the driver and say three to six months in, okay, we're going to now be the, like, I I just, I think that I think, at least what I'm asking is, first of all, I look up at the priorities and I acknowledge that this will not, if I were to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 this, that I don't think that this is 1, 2, 3, or 4, or 5, right? So it's probably 6. And so I think it's just that small sign of we are going to convene or help convene. And then as we start to figure it out, we will re- And then as we start to figure it out, we will re, and we could come back. And so I think, I'm not anti-feasibility study and needs analysis. I just, I feel like we've got that information. I would like us to consider driving and then deciding if we need to do that, if that's something that's possible and that this council could support.
I have a lot of experience working for a community-based organization and I raised ten million dollars last year for a homeless shelter. I am telling you, the only way to have the city do this in a meaningful way is not a ten-year-old feasibility, the census data track alone has changed so much. And I, I hear you. I worked in an organization that served a lot of people. But we, from our viewpoint, we either hand it to somebody to take the reins and skip the feasibility. If we do not do that, we will continue to spiral. I think a meaningful step that you guys could be proud of is it will be prioritized. We could figure it out, we could go. It doesn't mean we start from scratch. There's some data in that study that, that is good, but it is not like what we would use to make decisions. It is missing a lot of important information. And then, you know, the other uses of those buildings, the tax center, stuff like that might not fit into the vision that you just painted. So I think what the city manager is suggesting is a meaningful first step. It signals to the community, we're taking it seriously and we get going. But if, I could also support giving it to an outside agency. I'm just saying, if we are the driver, that is the path we have to take. If we want to be actively participating, or that's not going to preclude you guys from participating if we're not the driver. But it's going to make it hard to put city resources towards it. And so I think what the city manager is suggesting, from what the operation side can handle right now, gets a meaningful first step.
Councillor Hassan, just to clarify, so you're, you, you're saying you can support the needs assessment, but with an open mind that as you guys work through it, if the city, if it's not the city as the regional convener, that everybody would be open-minded to having that discussion?
So that would. Yes, I mean, my preference would be not to have any assessment, just to be clear. But um, I obviously, you know, this consensus, I believe in consensus. I, the only other last piece I'll say is, you know, we are hopefully going to have an equity officer. And in theory, it, councillor Kim, you know, like we're not, like, we would have someone who, who is on staff that could more excellently guide us and, and would have access to this information. I think between the coalitions of communities of color, between like all of the reports that I've seen, even in the last three to five years around things that communities have said, there's actually a ton out there, which it's, it's a matter of whether it's the equity officer and/or an individual bringing that stuff together. So I, I'm supportive of what Jenny's proposing. I, my concern is I think it slows us down and I just, I want us to say that we're willing to drive and then willing to hand over the keys when we have to. And I really need to eventually take a break.
Yeah, let's um, yeah, can we get councillor Kim's comment and then take a break? And then I think when we come back, we can wrap this conversation and do the priorities.
Well, I do support, but city manager Jenny suggested, I'm all for it. And I appreciate all the input, the expertise. So um, I just wanted to make it successful and I think Jenny can come back with us um, later on, talk about it. And fully supporting.
I appreciate that. I think you have staff that are ready to map out a path forward for you. And we will, we want to take in consideration that, you know, we, we do have a dated um, feasibility, but there's some really great nuggets in there. We have twenty-twenty information from Wake Up Beaverton that I think is also a part of that foundational piece. And then on top of it, looking at kind of defining the what more clearly. So allow us the bandwidth to do that, but this feedback here, I think will give us that first step um, that we can do this next fiscal year.
Can I just add also, and councillor Hussin, I feel like having that next body of information makes me feel comfortable that like, uh, hopefully in three, six months, whatever the timeframe is, that we can say we're going to drive or we're going to be the passenger. So for me, like, I'm totally open to that. I don't feel strongly that we have to be one or the other, but I feel like I need a little more information. But completely open to who does it and then what our role is supporting it going forward, totally open to that.
Councillor Teeter, go ahead, knowing that there's a strong desire for a break.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make it quick. Uh, Jenny, thank you for the next step. I would support that too. And I would also support what councillor Hussin is saying about turning the keys over in the future. I just have some hesitation about us as a mostly white council and then mostly white organization being the driver the whole time. So if we can build this up so there's a solid foundation and if you can get us a needs analysis feasibility study that gives us a good starting point too, we can feel comfortable taking those steps. I would support that. So I think it's a good, good step for me.
All right. So based on all of this conversation, um, we can pick it back up, but I'm, I'm feeling some general consensus around leaving the, the objective here of um, a needs assessment as a starting point and putting this stuff in the parking lot to figure out after, after you get the data, what comes next. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, you have well-earned your break. So let's, um, let's take, because we're not doing lunch, let's go ahead and take fifteen minutes. And that way you guys can replenish on snacks and be prepared to get through the rest of our work today.
We ready? Where did our, the rest of our group go? And it was a grazing lunch break. Hopefully they didn't like go to lunch. Edward, continue with your karaoke if you want while we wait for the others. Intermission. You said that the last one here has to do karaoke with Council Kimmy's karaoke microphone. Are we, are we gonna wait for, no, get it going? Okay. All right, so just, we wrapped up the conversation on the multicultural center. So, the direction to staff. Whoa, bring it back, bring it back. Okay. Direction to staff is the needs assessment as a starting point. We put the other items in the parking lot. So, as resources, capacity becomes available, you guys can reconsider that. One of the questions that you guys started out with this morning, we were doing the reflections, is ensuring that staff has enough direction. So, I think this is an opportunity maybe to, for Jenny to take a look at what we have on the board and make sure that you have enough direction for what you need. Because that was something we wanted to confirm.
Um, I do.
Council, how are you feeling about the priorities that we have up there? Knowing that there's intersection for some of these, as you mentioned during the multicultural center discussion with the overarching goal areas. But, at least where these objectives, where the priorities are in their current phase, it feels like it makes sense where they're located, but you can move them if you'd like.
Well, I think it would be helpful to remove the ones that are already on this list. And there are some, like the governance policy development, seems like there's one on there, it's like clear rules. Rules and procedures, roles and responsibilities. We've also got on, council onboarding, and I think those are gonna get captured in it. So, removing some of the ones on here that maybe they made it up there because we just wanted to get to completion faster, but to see what's left, that would be a fresh thing that would be added to the list would be helpful.
Okay. Which would be, it would be this one.
But, hold on, I wanna. Slightly counterpoint, because I think the, the roles and responsibility are beyond the council. I think we've addressed the council piece, but in that work plan, it didn't really have staff and procedures. It was solely focused on us. And so, while the, the goal is the same, who is going, who we're gonna focus on now is different, because we didn't prioritize that with the consultants. What do you think?
I think I would be building that in operationally when they give him. I think, um, for right now, I think you can take it off or keep it, it doesn't matter, because I know that that's gonna be a priority area under good governance anyway. But, that's gonna be kind of where my lens is, is looking at council, commissions, and then overall protocol process for you. And then offline, I'm already working with this team on understanding where our admin policy gaps are.
Yeah, officially, if it's kind of distracting, I think that's fine, you can move it. The things that you guys are gonna prioritize are in the purple, those are the six items. These are just the state of the game.
I just have like a question, or two questions? Is this where you want me to ask questions? Okay. Jenny, can you tell us a little bit more about like what the board and commission assessment looks like? And what the traffic calming program? And maybe you're gonna come back to us, and that's fine too, but I just, maybe high level? So, if this is a place we should tell you anything?
So, that's a really hard question right now, because I've gotta bench everything kind of against each other. But, the board and commission assessment, I mean, there's actually really low hanging fruit already, because there's some boards that have just been kind of sitting there that you haven't made appointments with, that Bill and I were saying you could automatically, you know, formalize that and take them off the list officially. So, we do have cleanup. But, part of it is coming back to you to see where there's opportunity for consolidation, where there's opportunity for efficiencies. And I need to talk with staff offline to figure out what those deliverables look like, and then how that benches against capacity and all the other ones. And then you talked about traffic. So, part of the direction in prior year was really looking at the traffic calming program and to reexamine kind of how that is done, looking at our ordinance. It was actually a large body of work. So, again, that's something that I have to work with the public works team to figure out, okay, on all of these processes that are required in this, in this goal, what is it that we could actually do in these next two years? And that's, that's been ongoing, and we just started to kind of launch some work around that in terms of an evaluation. So, that's gonna have to come back to you, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna get out of, out ahead of staff on it, because I haven't frankly had those conversations on what that, so I can have like, I can't build you a word picture right now on it.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, this is my first time doing this, with this body. And it went differently than I thought. And that's okay, because when I look at all of the things that Jenny and staff have educated about, of existing stuff that's going on, which is fantastic, it makes me very proud of this city. When I look at, when I think about the lens, through the lens of staff capacity, which we've heard is an issue. When I look at the budget, I know pretty well, a lot of us do, the challenges we face. When I look at this through all of those lenses, if we can make progress in any of these areas, or all, you know, some of them, or all of them, whatever it ends up being over the next couple of year, couple of years, that will make me incredibly proud of the work that this city and this staff does. And I think it's, I think this is a message that our community should hear. Like, if we had an unlimited budget, we could do lots of things, but we don't, right? To the mayor's point earlier, you know, the money's not gonna fall down from the ceiling, from the sky anymore. And I look at this, and I think if you would've asked me the same question yesterday morning, I might've even been a little disappointed, but knowing that everything that I've heard about, you know, all of the things that I mentioned, I'm the exact opposite now. This makes me incredibly proud, and I feel like we're in a good place. I would ask, the one ask that I have, is, as a new counselor, is someone who gets asked this question a lot, it would be really helpful for, if we could develop talking points around each of these things, and, and including, being inclusive of kind of the budget staffing and the work that's ongoing and the other priorities. Because I feel like part of my work now begins to, to, to share this with the community, and how incredibly proud I am, right? And, and the, the actual 20 sticky notes, but the actual volume of that work? Like, I, I think I would, I would need some communication help with that, but, but I'm, I feel really good about this, and I feel optimistic, and I appreciate everyone participating and helping.
I, I would say a good starting point is, initially, I was a little thrown when the city manager put a two, two-page priority thing in our Your City newsletter that none of us had seen before. But, the information content was really good, and maybe we take a, a play from the, the federal government on like, infrastructure week, good governance week, and then connecting the city manager's message of everything that was accomplished last year, through a lens that we can talk about, social media can talk about, but really, like, we are terrible at focusing on the work that we have done. Right? And I think that's part of the hiccup to feel like we're not going anywhere. But, I do think the city manager's message in Your City was like an amazing place for us to start and look at.
Other, other comments? So, I've got the talking points, and then to the mayor's point, to kind of build a communication strategy around these priorities. Anything else? Well, yes, we were just reflecting on making sure that staff had the direction that they needed, and Jenny confirmed that she did. And then, just talking about, you know, does this feel, does this feel good? Does it feel right? Are you guys ready to prioritize? And when we say prioritize, we're talking about these top six items. Council Tivnan, did you have a, I thought I saw a hand, but I may have just saw, yeah. Council Teeter?
I feel really good about the items in the purple. I think my one question is regarding the tree canopy purple one. And if that should be a little bit more all-inclusive to include like climate or environmental justice? I'm not sure if it needs to, but I'm thinking that won't be the only thing we're, we're working on, and I want to be able to like show the community, like this meets our environmental goal that we set out as a council, even if it's not like a tree code project. Like, we might be doing stream restoration or purple pipe, and I feel like it would fit in that section.
I think what you have here is a good, there's a good lens for, and there's a lot of work that's happening, and a lot of federal money that's gonna filter down to potential projects. And so, you, when you're doing your communication strategy, that could still fit. Jenny?
I was just thinking through what Kevin was saying, and one of the, one of the charts that Ashley, was Ashley that encouraged me to make, was that matrix that has all the goals and then all the priorities. And so, if you wanna show like visually where it's checking boxes on your goals, I might be able to do an update of that. So, think, think of it as all of your goals across, and then on the side are all of those key priorities, and then you have literally checkboxes that run across it to show how you're hitting, hitting all of that, that document right there.
And I was thinking about like, one layer above the six, that we, we have made very clear to the city manager is one through diversity, equity, inclusion, and climate. I think that is the lens that they view the six priorities through, and so, it's more like a pyramid to me, because we don't call out specifically equity up there, because it's, it shouldn't be its own category, it should be infused into every decision we're making. And I think it's the same with climate. And I think it used to be the vision advisory committee, and we just, you know, we made that decision that like, that wasn't, that wasn't enough of a lens. These were the two lens in which we wanted staff to do it. And we're, we're seeing that in the work, and so, I don't know how to concrete it more, so it feels like we're doing more, but maybe the city manager has a...
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to send some of this stuff back out, particularly Kevin, so you can kind of see that if you don't know what the statement that the mayor's talking about, it, it's an overall statement of, of how you pursue every single priority, and it has kind of three different kind of buckets, if you will. I'll recirculate that to the council, but, so that you have it, and then you can ask me if you have some more questions.
The other thing that you guys will receive as a deliverable is a summary graphic of the, just memorializing your overarching goals, your priorities, and then we can also include in that summary graphic that lens, to make sure that it's all really clear, how those pieces fit together and how they align.
And I think it's also worth noting that on the website, under city council, on the splash page or front page for the city council section, it's got those, the matrices with the goals in it, but I'm curious if it has that statement on it that you just referred to, city manager?
It does.
I know we have folks watching today, and this has also been input we've received is, you know, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, and some of it we've already done, it just isn't as visible as maybe it could be, or it's not in places that they don't know where to look. So, I, I think that's, it would be helpful to maybe, in an upcoming Your City, include, include those, include what, the outcomes of this retreat.
We could also do a little bit of kind of inventory real estate on kind of the homepage itself, so that we can drive some of that traffic there as well, and then be a little bit more inclusive in some of the upcoming like regular distributions like you suggested.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, what we're talking about, the talking points and the materials, are we doing like a new document for 2324? Are you adding, are we?
Twenty-three, twenty-five, two years.
Thank you.
Yes, so, so right now, you've got, as, as Counselor Tivnan was talking about, you have a webpage that has all the council goals, that's gonna be updated, and so, I'll update that work plan, so it'll be a new work plan, but it will incorporate kind of some of the old and the new together, because you do have existing projects that are carrying over. And then that will all be presented to you as a recommended document. You will approve a resolution with any changes, and there'll be a discussion, just how we did in the year prior.
Any other questions before you guys do the prioritization?
Yeah, for everyone's knowledge, the city of Beaverton is committed to meeting its goals by embracing its community vision, advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion, proactively responding to climate change, and striving for fiscal sustainability. That's the existing commitment statement.
Okay, so prioritization. This is a data point for Jenny, so this is not like a scientific exercise, it's not a, it's not a full-on commitment, it's a data point that she'll take into her budget development. And so, how we'll do this is, you guys will get, we're just gonna do the old-fashioned dot exercises, the easiest, most efficient way to quickly move through this. You'll get three dots. There are rules for this, you cannot place all your dots on one priority. There is no placing dots in the middle of priorities and trying to make us guess which one you select it. You place it on the post-it with the purple writing, and let us know which ones are most important to you, okay? Is that clear? All right, I've seen councils try to get really creative with this exercise, so...
I do have one question.
Yes.
So, the organizational stability and financial health are very similar, but do they count as different, or would the good governance bubble be an option? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, those are different.
Again, there's, think about it in terms of, there are...
I was trying.
There are like work plan items that come below these priorities, and that this is giving Jenny direction on how to allocate funds and propose something to you, and so, that would, it would be more helpful with the, with the priority piece. Council Duggar?
Didn't we call that financial recovery too, instead of health? Recovery is a word that's more important to me.
Well, first we had resiliency, and then you... First we had resiliency, and then you have recovery, and then somebody said health.
I like recovery.
Recovery was the winning one.
Yeah.
Which one?
Recovery. Yeah, sorry to be a stickler about that.
I had a lot of lines through it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Financial recovery.
Just want to put it out there that like this dot exercise is complicated because it'd be really hard not to put a dot on organizational stability and financial recovery.
Right.
I might not too either.
No, I know. This is again, you can see, you can see where councils try to get really creative with this. You get three dots. I want to understand your top three priorities. Um, I'm going to hand them out now. You don't get to like sell your dots to other people either. No. One, one body, three dots each. Yeah, I know. Are there any other specifics I have not acknowledged? All right.
Hey, Sarah. I hope I should ask this.
Well, you guys, it's on, it's on camera. You guys, we were just having an interesting conversation about different city attorneys have expressed this.
So we were just talking about the issue of, of does the public get to know what elected official voted for what? And, and we've done this in the past where each one has a different colored dot, but these are all the same colored dot. But it is on camera. And, and ultimately, this isn't the final decision because this will come back. If it is like last year, a resolution that council will adopt. So I'm, I'm comfortable with what we've done here, but...
And this is just for Jenny's priorities, right?
Yeah.
In creating the work plan. They're all on.
My counter to the city attorney was, this is a, my counter was, this is a polling exercise, and you guys aren't taking...
This is what happens when I walk away from the mic. I know.
So I, I also want to clarify, to me, it, it's, of course, I want to put a dot on all of them. But I'm like, well, we just settled that the multicultural center is going to get a needs analysis, or sorry, a needs assessment. Right? So to me, that one's in motion. And so it seemed like, like, like that's the win because there's nothing else we can do this year.
I love the dot.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that that it's, um, it's like new starts, right?
Again, I think there's different interpretations of this exercise, but you just keep in mind, it is, it's a data point for the, for the city manager to consider as she has the responsibility of putting together proposed budget. And then you guys are ultimately making a decision when you approve your financial plan. I mean, that is the ultimate prioritization of, of how you're, because that is going to give you an opportunity to look at all the resources comprehensively.
And I, I think for me, this is really helped, this, this actually lined up with kind of what I thought. Um, and it's, it just tells me that you've heard messaging around that Houston, we have a problem, that the organization, who is a great service provider, needs the care and feeding that they need, right? Through this process, you feel good that there's a first step on the multicultural center. The other things are just as important, and that I knew the tree thing would come up. So that was really helpful for me to see that. And I think we've got, you know, a stopgap measure to address that in the, in the current year while we recognize there's a whole body of work that needs to come over a period of time. So this does not surprise me, and that makes me feel good that I kind of read those tea leaves. And I know this was hard, by the way, and it doesn't mean that you don't care about other things. And we'll just blame Sarah because she gave you like only three dots, so.
Blame it all on me.
I feel like I should move a dot now. I, I just want to put this out there. I don't think we have to do anything different. But I do think in the future, I'd love for staff to do some help on dots. Like I'd love to know where they were at. It's fine. It's passed. But I do think that their expertise is important to me.
So I do have other colored dots, Bill. If you want it, then sometimes we have had staff weigh in if it's an important data point for the council. But I have other colored dots if you guys want to see that.
One, one quick question is, um, zero to 10, how much pain is going to be the good governance piece? What I'm saying is how the council willing to take, we don't know yet, or we just want to give temperature?
You need to say more about what you mean by that.
You know, how, how severe restructuring and financial stability are we looking at? Zero to 10, like three, five?
Um, 10 being the highest?
Yeah.
I, I think there's significant work. I think you're in between like a, a seven and, and a 10. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done. But does it all happen all at one time? No, it's incremental.
Let, let me put this out there for council. One of the things that we've heard in the last year is that you felt like you didn't own the goals and you're stepping into somebody else's shoes. While I think staff has been incredibly helpful in forming this, it's a meaningful step for this council to make movement together based on our priorities, so we own it. And if staff go up there and put dots on something that we have just said is not our priority, I feel like we're going to continue in this struggle. And this is meaningful for us. We have struggled with this as a council for a long time on making decisions. We ask for more information, we kick the can down the road. So to me, like as much as I appreciate staff's feedback, it's more important for me as the mayor that we do this meaningful step together. And the, the agency hears this is what council wants from us. And I think in a, in a next year, in a previous iteration where we are more comfortable making decisions together, staff can have a lot of meaningful input, but they, but I think this is important for us. So that way, when we're sitting on the dais and we can communicate to the community, we made this step together. These are our goals, and this is the direction we're going.
Are you guys, are you guys okay with where, where this stands? I've heard from, I can see from staff, you've got, Jenny has what she needs. And there's clarity here, and I think it feels like there's clarity amongst the group. Are we good? Let's just check in. We're not, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Don't post these. We need the city manager to come back. Yeah, I mean, people are watching, but like we still have to do this exercise of like coming back with the city manager's report. And so just don't, don't jump the gun here.
Well, maybe for those of you who are watching, this is still a work in progress, and the city manager will come back to us in the future city meetings.
Yes, this is still in draft format, and you guys will receive all the graphics and the notes from the workshop as a reflection piece from the work we did together.
So in an abundance of caution, let's identify who voted for housing, safe streets, and multicultural center. Otherwise, everyone voted for everything else that's up there.
Uh, I voted for housing. Uh, for me, the shelter completion, the countywide, like, to me, that, that is the third leg in the stool to really get the governments off the ground, so.
You don't necessarily have to write anything up there, but I just want it for the record now. And then we had two on safe streets and two on multicultural.
I was one of the safe streets.
I was the other. All right. So Counselor Duggar and Hessen for safe streets, and then the other...
I did multicultural.
Multicultural and, and, okay, so Counselor Hessen and Counselor Kimmy on multicultural. We good? Okay, for the record. Got to keep the city attorneys happy. All right. Checking in with the group. So on a scale of one to five, one being like, we just, we don't feel heard, just really miss the mark. And five being like, I feel good about the process and I feel good about the goals. Where, where's the group? Just team check in. Counselor Hessen? Oh, you're, I thought you were raising your hand to go first. I was like, great.
Yeah, oh, four, four point nine.
Four point nine, okay. Counselor Teeter?
Um, I don't know, probably like a three out of five. I feel really good about the goals. I think I'm just struggling with the prioritization process and just not being able to put dots everywhere. So I think this is a me thing, knowing that I'm also working with a budget that'll also make me feel about a three out of five or worse. But that's just the environment that I'm working in.
All right. Counselor Hart, may I press?
I'm at a four. It's just because the whole picture is still a little foggy to me, and I'm so worried about capacity. So I feel really good about the golden parties we set, but I still have concerns about where we land.
Here?
You know, I think I'm at a five, um, and not because I think I got everything I wanted or what, you know, there's been years, you know, Cheryl mentioned yesterday about a residential inspection program. There are things that I've wanted as a city councillor that are years and years and years we've not been able to get over the line. But as the mayor, when I'm looking internally at our organization and knowing the capacity, managing where the budget situation is, understanding where governments around us are, I think this is a great plan the community can hear from us. We're going to prioritize fiscal sustainability, making sure that our government is strong so we can have a prosperous future, I think is important messaging for us. Like we have to spend this year stabilizing and not spiraling. And I think while it's not the year of fun and it's not the year of really great projects, our community deserves a government that is functional and a council that is moving forward in one direction. And I think the community gets this out of this prioritization.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think I'm at a five, given, given the year that we're entering into. I think that we tempered our expectations. We had really good conversations about keeping our eye on the long game and putting things in context. I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes back. And I also really appreciated this and seeing everything that we've got already in progress. I think city of Beaverton is really responsive and creative and proactive. And I, I'm hoping that the council, while we're continuing to make gains, we're also helping to keep a realistic environment in which to, to craft policy and, and have staff be able to execute on it. That being said, I think that the messaging of this to our boards and commissions and to the general public is a piece of this. I would love to make sure that that gets some time and attention because I think there's going to be a lot of, a, a lot of desire to really understand why it's going to be a boring year. Uh, and, and just that we're all on the same page for that. The last thing I'll say is that I'm very eager to have the conversation around boards and commissions. We, they, I don't know the genesis of all of them, of when what was started, you know, and what preceded what, and what used to be a thing and then isn't anymore. But there are some that seem to have galvanized their voices more strongly than others. And I, making sure that they're all in alignment in terms of how they're being utilized and what they're being expected to do, and how they can feel most valuable in the work. And yeah, that's, those are my thoughts.
All right. Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I think I'm, I think, I think I'm at a four, but I don't think that's going to stay a four. So I think what will get me to a five is seeing the work plan and seeing the budget and having robust conversations with this council to, to kind of figure out the implementation of these priorities over the coming couple of years. I think that will make me a solid five. I was very happy with the process. I echo what the mayor said around stability and looking at our, some of our neighbors and, and other cities that are struggling a lot more than we are. And we're very fortunate in that aspect that this, the predecessor councils did a lot of work on boring things. And that actually gives me confidence in having a year of boring, that that doesn't necessarily mean bad, right? That that means investing in things that maybe a future council will hopefully look back on us and appreciate in ways that I'm privileged to do now, to look back and, and, you know, boring isn't always bad, is what I'm saying, so. But, but I'm a four. I will be a five in a couple of months, and I, I appreciate hurting us cats from you and your team and the, the staff and the, and everyone. I feel very hopeful. And that's the last thing I'll say. Thanks. You're up.
All right. Save the best for last. Um, I'm closer to three out of five, but not because it's bad or good. Um, one hope that I had, but I think this will continue, is for us to be able to hear from each other. Because I know we all, I know that the goal was to reach priorities, and I know why that's important. But I think it's also important that we're always hearing from each other in terms of what's going on in this capacity, if we're able to. I think one thing that we didn't touch on a ton was that my parking, one of my parking lots, which is around alternative response to police. It's just something that weighs heavy for me, and I want us to be thinking about. I also know that there's an SRO conversation going on, and I just want to let you all know that I'm asking a lot of questions about that too. And then the last thing I'll leave you with is, I know we talked about like giving each other talking points and trying to make sure that we're singing kind of from the same song. I do think that at some point, a couple of us might have different songs in terms of the things we're excited about and the things that we're not, and that that's going to have to be okay too. So we'll sing from the same song, and as we interact more and have to talk about the budget and what's happening, it'll be really complicated communication to the community that we're going to have to figure out. And some of us are going to do it in different ways, and that has to be okay too.
Okay. Right. Well, I feel like we, kind of knowing where you all stand, we know where the work is left to do and to, to get you all closer to that five. And, um, and let's, let's wrap up over the next 30, 35 minutes with some team building conversations and what you guys need as a body, as a team, to move the work forward. So feel free to take like a two-minute stretch break while we shift these boards over, so. Statistics-wise. All right. As soon as we have Counselor Kimmy back, we'll start. All right, we're getting the... We're getting the team back here. All right, guys, let's bring it back in.
All right, guys, let's bring it back in. All right, you guys love breaks. Okay, team, this is the last, last part. Thirty, thirty minutes, unless you need more, because we did have it till one, but thirty minutes. If we can, if we can, if we can work our way through the conversation, we're going to kind of come full circle here. So we started in the very first governance training, talking about some expectations you all have for the team, how to strengthen the partnership. And I've just been, since that conversation, just really reflecting and like reading up on the fundamentals of a team. What makes a great team? Sasha and I had a great opportunity to go to this TEDx Portland event, like salon thing down at Wyden and Kennedy. And there's a guy there talking about what makes a great team and his experience in building teams at Nike and then other, other industries. And then I was reading up last night on just what are the, what are the conditions you need for, for a great team? And there was some great work done by organizational psychologist, Richard Hackman. And there were four things, and this kind, I felt like it really summed it up, like all of the things that I've been trying to just filter over the last couple of months, about having a compelling direction. And I think, you know, what are we working towards? And I think you guys really solidified that for your team today. Having a strong structure, which is about clear roles and tasks and norms. And I think you guys have done a lot of that through your governance training and so really setting that fundamental in place. A supportive context, which is about providing recognition to folks. While the confetti cannon scared me to death yesterday, I mean, it was a good, it was a good fun way to, and just hearing Jenny's recap of all the accomplishments to celebrate the success. And I hope you guys don't just do that once a year and you do it on a regular basis, because that supportive context, that recognition feels good. A supportive context is also about having access to the information and the data that you need, to the training, to the resources. I was working with another group and they were just talking about from a staff perspective, like having, having that clarity and having a council put together or adopt a budget that gives them the resources to do the work is really meaningful and how, and feels supportive. So just thinking about all of those things as part of that supportive context. And then the last fundamental that he mentions is about having this shared mindset. I had to dig a little deeper to understand what was meant by that, but it was about having this identity and this understanding of who you are as a team to be able to move those things forward. And so that's really what I want to focus on with you guys at this, as this reflection exercise. Is who are, what's, what's your shared identity as a team? What do you need to move the work forward from each other? So some ways to think about that is what's the council's role in supporting and advancing these goals? What are some of your innovative, individual strengths that can support the team? And you also have some differences that you can reflect on that help to strengthen the team as well. It's, it's great to have the diversity that you have within this group to, because it helps you avoid groupthink. And it really helps you get to, you know, having some engaging and safe conflict. Helps you to understand different ideas and bring you towards more innovative solutions to help you address some of the really complex issues that you're working on. So I just want to hear from, from each of you. What is that shared identity, reflecting on some of those things? So council's role, strengths you bring, and differences that make you stronger. And I'll write it up here. Council's role in supporting the goals, individual strengths, and the, and the differences that also, that you bring, the diversity that also helped to strengthen the team. I'll write those, I'll write those down too. So compelling direction, strong structure, supportive context, and a shared mindset. I was also listening to this podcast yesterday and today on the way here. And it was, I love Adam Grant, he's like my favorite organizational psychologist. And I love his premise about how to make work not suck. I think that there's, there's just a lot to that. And he was interviewing, and it was just interesting because he mentioned the same organizational psychologist that did this, his, his work. And him and Abby Wambach, the US soccer star, were talking about what makes a great team. And they touched on these same four concepts. And so it just, it felt like this was, this was a really good foundation to help, help you guys have this conversation. So I think this is a reflection opportunity, so I think we can just kind of go around and have you guys share. And after, after thinking about this, what do you need? That's going to help you guys move forward in your goals. Maybe start with this, if you're struggling, maybe start with what the council's role in supporting the goals. Let's cover that one first.
I'll start for you, since no one's reaching for the mic. You know, I think the council's role in this is owning it. Cause I think where we have struggled with this in the last two years in the transition is that people felt like it wasn't theirs. There's a difference to me to owning where we're at and moving forward and still wanting to do other things. I yearn to do other things too, but our community, our agency, they need to know that this is what council is doing. Like, these are our goals. And I, so I think ownership and the ways we can do that, you know, I've already asked the city manager about printing them, having them in the building, making sure they're in our documents. Like, this is our first step together as this iteration of this council that's going to be along together now. I don't think it's always going to be this way. It's not always going to be budget focused, but like owning it, I think is the first important goal.
I got some, I think it's really easy to forget over the course of the year, because we get so much thrown at us to research and read and prepare for. So keeping it fully articulated mentally is really helpful. And an idea had been tossed around about having the goals somewhere in this room where not only the councillors and staff can see them visually, but so can everyone who comes to visit chambers. So that's one. I think consistent messaging to the community is helpful. And then the last one is not yanking the steering wheel, which I think is more common when, not yanking the steering wheel. Or, or I think it's more common when you have new councillors joining who have their own priorities, who have their own thoughts, and, and they want to, they want to have their fingerprints on the foundation. And because there's consistency with this cohort, we have our fingerprints on it together. So I, I think just staying the course and owning it and good messaging and remembering what we decided on.
I think that's councillor Duggar.
Yeah, I had a couple. I like the owning part, but, but I also think there's an understanding responsibility of this council doing the homework and really getting in, particularly for me, like in areas that aren't, maybe weren't my priority. Like, I look at that as my responsibility now to the community, because these are our shared and collective goals. And even if it wasn't my goal, it's now my goal. And so that means I've got to do some homework. And I think there's some socializing responsibility. We are, you know, understood to be messengers. And I think we, we need to take that role very seriously. The last point I'll make, and I think you've, you've made this a couple of times in various iterations, but knowing that we all don't start at the same place in every one of these priorities. And so one of my goals, one of the things that I hope to take out of this is both recognizing and understanding expertise. And then listening as, as part of that, right? Like, like you might be more further along on like the multicultural center and, and just recognizing that and then understanding that and listening to your perspective. And I think that's a goal. It's really hard, because I think a lot of us like to talk and we, we're paid to share our opinions. But sometimes the best opinion, I think, is just shutting up and listening. And I really want to take that to heart for me.
Other comments on council's role? Councillor Hessen and then councillor Teeter.
I would just add, and, and mostly because, I mean, this is a little bit what everyone before me has said, but making sure that we're communicating. And there was a word that you said, socializing, that I think is really important. Cause I think that's going to be really complicated. I mean, we have a lot of community that want a lot of things to happen, like yesterday. And so really trying to be consistent in, in helping people understand how we got here. We didn't, you know, this, this was not, I mean, this was a, I slept really well last night. Cause yesterday was such a important, you know, brain-focused time. And I think I will tonight too. And so just really helping the community understand. Cause I, I think that, to your point about yanking the, you know, the wheel, I don't want to yank the steering wheel, but, but there are things that this community may feel and want. And so how do we navigate that? And so consistent messaging and consistent socializing. And yes, we don't want to yank the wheel, but if there's a, something that comes up and we have to talk about how to deal with that wheel, being willing to do that as well. But hopefully not.
Councillor Teeter.
I think keeping our eyes as council on the compelling direction that we've talked about this weekend and the vision that we're trying to lay out and support staff and fulfilling will be really important. I think it's easy for us as councillors to, I think, get very far into the weeds of actually like creating policy or doing the work. But I want to really be able to lean into support, the supportive context of like supporting staff and management of doing the work and making sure they have the resources they need to be able to go after that strong, or the compelling direction that we're, that we're laying out. And then there is a certain amount of accountability piece for each other and for staff to just making sure we are keeping our eyes focused on the direction we're wanting to go and supporting each other with whatever needs we might have so that we can take those steps together. And the shared mindset piece being grounded in the communities that we represent and value.
Okay, I'm thinking about early on in our governance trainings, one of the things we talked about was no surprises. And I think our role here is really important. Even if someone feels that something we're doing is maybe not something that they feel really good owning, to make sure we're just having good communication about that, you know, like letting staff know, especially like if, for example, you wanted to say something publicly, let's like not have surprises about it. I think councillor Hessen, the, what I hear you saying is also responsiveness, right? Like, there's things that happen. We live in a world and we're all humans and so things happen. And so I think having kind of open communication with city manager and with each other about how do we respond to things? Cause the, we, we can do our best to plan how the year will go and then it won't go that way, right? I think we all know that. So I think, I think that having the opportunity for responsiveness is really important. But maybe it's just like a gentle turn of the wheel instead of yank. And now we're all going to use the Ls, and so thank you for that councillor Tivnan. So I think that's something that I'm kind of thinking about is like, you know, there may be some things that we are more passionate about than others on the work plan and just trying to keep that no surprises mentality and that one-team mentality, right? Like, we all are Team Beaverton. So I think that communication around it is important and like as best we can that we champion these things together where we have consensus and, and where we don't also. And I do feel like we had a lot of compromise happen in the last day and a half. And that, that to me is also part of our role, is, is compromising to find a path forward on our priorities.
For the record, I don't want to yank the steering wheel. Want that on record.
So I did all that, but for me, in a personal level, I want to recognize that all of us are leaders, that we have to represent the city. And I get asked from my community all the time, but I have to make sure that I represent the city priority first. And that's hard, because they think, you know, they can get whatever they want because they have somebody they know. But I, a lot of times I say no, and it's hard. But because I consider myself as Peter, leading the community, Beaverton. Of course, mayor's there, but she's want to get blamed all the time. I get to say the good things. Sorry, that's your job. But, but we have to represent city with that strong leadership, including the mayor and all of us and, and voice the same priorities and, and steady, boring as you can get, but steady. That staff is always, the question that they ask was a clear direction, a little bit clarity, right? So I think we got that this year. And, and then some of us will be two more years that we're together, right? So that, that means so much to me as a strong leader, show leadership humble. And I think that's council's role.
Use the microphone, I'm forgetting. Share an individual strength that you bring to this role. Cause I think it's important to recognize and appreciate each other's strengths, because you all have different ones that you bring. And so what's one, and you all have many strengths, but what's one that's really important to you that you value? And why I think this is really important is that sometimes when, when you recognize that somebody has a strength that's really important to them that they value and that strength is being restricted from being used, you can find yourself in a place of conflict. So I think if you can understand the strength that you bring and why it's important to your teammates, it can help you to kind of steer clear of that.
You really want us to do them separate? Oh yeah, this is super brief. So I started answering these questions as one answer. So I actually think that our differences is what makes us so strong. Like, that is what excites me about this council. Like, we all bring such different experiences and different connections. And that makes me really excited for the work that we're going to do, like super, super excited. And I hope that we feel like we can bring the different experiences and things that we get to hear from our community in a way to the dais, which I think is hard and something we're really struggling with, so that we can make sure that we're hearing the community. And maybe not in operational ways, but in other ways that we can help the community feel seen and heard. Those are the differences and diversity question. I was trying to think really quickly. I think my strength slash weakness is empathy. I have a lot of people reach out to me. And I have a lot of empathy for what communities here are going through and so trying to navigate the empathy that I feel with action or sometimes inaction. That is something that is probably a blessing and a curse. And I'm just really thankful for you all.
Thank you. Who wants to go next?
Thank you. I think one of my strengths is kindness. I really try to approach everything I do with kindness. Not that I necessarily was going to be a peacemaker, like I'm okay with conflict, but I want it to be done E-I-E-R. I want it to be done kind, with kindness.
I think I'm fairly methodical and sometimes pragmatically stoic. But I really like finding resonant frequency with people, finding the thing in the middle, whatever it is. Because no matter what your differences are with someone, there's always something that you have in common. And if you can find that common ground, it can lead to the ability to build trust and rapport and truly hear each other. And I think that's probably what I love best about being in this role, is being exposed to so many different people and then hearing them. And I think that's probably what I love best about being in this role is being exposed to so many different people and then hearing them and trying to find that common ground.
Yeah, Council Duggar and then Council Teeter.
Yeah, I think for me, uh, it's pragmatism. Right? You know, I have my passions. I have all the things, but as I've thought about this and not just today, like I like listening and I like our disagreement like because I feel like my brain does grow and like I also look at each of you as friends. And so that creates like a safe space for us to disagree and like I don't ever get mad. I don't ever think, you know, that person said the wrong thing or just I'm like, wow, that's like planted a seed or not at all, like don't agree with that at all. And that's like, I feel safe in that pragmatism. And that I'm willing to re rethink about things based on what people have said. And I really enjoy our dynamic, the the conversations like feeds me on an intellectual level. And and I just, I don't know, I want to hold on to that.
I'm really glad I'm going after Council Teeter and Doug because I dream huge dreams and they are often not practical nor methodical. And knowing counselors Tivnan and Duggar long before actually being on council together, we've been able to have some amazing conversations about dreams and realism and where they where they intersect. And I'm really excited about bringing that to this role, too, and and seeing how we can push forward, but also like actually do things.
Can I capture that as big dreams or dreamer?
Yeah. I've been called annoyingly optimistic. Yeah, yeah.
Council Kimmy is going to do some curiosity for you guys afterward.
So, um, I think I'm a peacemaker. Yeah, equity meeting. That's word word I learned yesterday. I looked it up. So yeah, that's, that's the drive I have always imagined myself like an ocean. So if somebody throws a rock, it doesn't create a wave. So that's what I'm striving for. And I didn't go work for it. I learned yesterday. So, so that's great.
Peacemaker or was it a different word?
Peacemaker.
I think what's interesting about this list is I'm not shocked at all. And I don't think like what I'm going to say is shocking either. I think it categorizes both as a strength and a weakness. I'm and I, I was going to say gold driven first, but I really think it's strategic. And so when the way that stuff enters my brain, it's about getting to the end. Um, which could be in conflict with empathy and dreamer and methodical and pragmatic and and peacemaker because the person that has to hold the strategic vision has to kind of step some of that stuff aside. So what I, what I really like about this list, it's, it's, it's in its totality very strong. Um, and it shows a little bit from my viewpoint, how do we kind of bring some of these together? And I think these strengths cause conflict within this group because if we're batting from empathy, it's everything, you know, everything is everything. And if we're only kind or we're only a dreamer. So, yeah, it's an interesting list.
Yeah, I, there's a, there's a training I do where we talk about we focus on strengths, but our, you guys have all mentioned it in different ways, but our our overdone strengths or weaknesses are rooted in are rooted in those strengths. And so it's when we edge on kind of overdoing those things or not figuring out how to pull in a different strength to balance out the strength that we prefer and and feel strongest about, that you can find yourself in in some some conflict. So just thinking about how to leverage those vests, how to temper them and and pull in other strengths when you need to to ultimately get the the results you want in these relationships to help you guys move your goals forward. So to close, I think, um, it would be nice to just ha- go around and have you guys talk about how you celebrate your differences. And so we can go just person by person and you all can say something nice about appreciating something that that's a difference that they bring to their group, a level of diversity that they, that you appreciate the way of thinking that they, a lens that they bring.
Well, I'll go first since I'm always last. One thing that was actually very revealed to me personally was, um, I was very insular in my own culture. I'm learning a lot about white culture. It's in a very good way. I, my personal interaction with non Korean, my, mo- mo- most of my interaction was minority Korean or somebody who's from Middle East, people of color, most of my life. And this is most time that I'm actually interacting with the majority culture. And and it's really good. It's really a learning experience. And strength strengthens me. And I think same vice versa, that you're learning something from me. And that's gives a lot of strengths. And, um, but there's also also challenge where we just, I just don't understand where somebody is coming from because I never grew up here. But I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to accept. And even if I don't understand, I think there's enough trust that even though I don't, I don't understand, I know where it's coming from. So I'll go go along with it. And, uh, so it's, it's a personal growth for me. And I think, I think it's good.
We can celebrate. You can say it about your own or you can say it about someone else's on the team.
Um, I think that, I can't remember who said it earlier, but we're all, feels like we're all staring out in the same direction. You know, looking at the horizon in the same direction. And that's great. And or another metaphor would be, we all see the summit. We're all trying to get to it, but we might have different methods of climbing the mountain to get there. And I, I think it's almost a prerequisite prerequisite to run for office that you have to be confident in yourself. And sometimes that can get in your way once you're in your seat and on the dais. And like you had said, it's, it's great. I can't remember who said it, um, Carnegie or somebody. You never want to be the smartest person in the room. I, I think that there's a level of rapport that's been built amongst all of us that we're giving space to learn from each other. So I didn't know any of you before I ran for office. And I, I think we, we struck paydirt with this this body. I'm really excited about the work we're going to do. And and that excitement is absolutely directly linked to the fact that we have respect, rapport and trust in each other.
Um, I think I'm the only person on council that was born and raised in Beaverton. And so it's pretty cool to have all these different lived experiences and from different parts of the country to like come here now and kind of help build the community that we want Beaverton to become.
I'll go, I'll go next. Trying to think how to say this. But I think, I think one of the things that's, that's a difference. I don't know if it's collectively, I, I don't know how to say it, but like, we recognize that we're different. And we're not intimidated by that. And we actually seek out information from each other, right? Like, like I know that I don't have, you know, I know there's a certain amount of privilege. I, I, I don't, I don't have the experience of an immigrant or a refugee or a personal color. But I'm curious and I want to hear it, right? I don't have the experience of a woman. You know, elected woman particularly like, like, you know, like, I really want to learn and I want to get better, right? So I think there's this like curiosity that exists amongst all of us. And I've, I've heard it, they're asked about me and my community and and like that. It just means so much, I think, not only that, that we recognize each other's differences. But there's that curiosity amongst all of us. And I, I hope we never lose that, like, because that framework and that mindset. I think will power a lot of really good things as we think about like, Council Kimmy, to your point. You know, about like not just representing my community or a community, like collectively, that voice represents everyone. But I, I just, I thi- I think there's something magical there. And I'm, I'm really, I, I hope that we never lose that curiosity. Right? And and that and and the the investments that come along with that, the showing up to events, you know, um, I was telling Council Hassan about going to a, a Hindu community event a couple of weeks ago. It's magical for me, right? Like, it was a really cool event. And I don't want any of us to ever lose that curiosity. I think it's really cool.
I think we each come with some very different skill sets as well as backgrounds, but I want to focus on skill sets for a minute. Like, an example is I met Council Duggar a few years ago when he first started coming to the neighborhood association committee I was in. It's like new kid on the black block kind of thing, like, who is this guy? And then he's like, hi, Len Nak is doing all of these great things and tree plantings. And like, these are great examples that we can do here. And it's like, yeah, like, there are some great skill sets that we've each learned in our own communities and educations and workplaces. And I, I think we're able to bring them here really effectively. So that if we're curious, like, we can really learn from each other well and make good policy. But I'm really excited about those different back, very different skill sets.
I'll just, I mean, I don't think that needs to be written. I was just thinking about what you were saying and, uh, how different my experience is from Council Kimmy's because uh, I did grow up here in the United States and we came to Beaverton when I was in high school. So I've been around Beaverton for a long time. And I've, and I think what makes me unique, you know, so my dad, y'all know my dad's from India, my mom's from Pakistan, but I'm, I'm from the Muslim community and the Muslim community is African and Middle Eastern and Asian. And so I, I get to, um, inter- inter- interact and engage a lot with those communities. And so I grew up most of my life code switching between my family and this, this room. And maybe I'm with the Somali community and now I'm like louder than usual and I don't even realize that I'm doing it. So I just, I've always lived in that sort of like those differences and those different like cultural experiences. I, I just, I, I don't know. I really wanted to share because I was thinking about what you were saying. And and I do think as you talk about navigating, like you were saying, kind of white people. Uh, I talk a lot about systems and and, you know, how white supremacy shows up and how we dismantle that and what that looks like. And I've done some of that work a little bit professionally in HR and D E N I. And so that's, I think, the lens that I bring. And so I'll just put it out there. Like, if you ever have questions or want to understand more about how these systems work, like, that's the thing that I'm maybe really committed to like, to, to undoing. Because I do think that schools and cities and systems unintentionally leave out a lot of people and that it's our job as we sit here to make sure that those people aren't left out of a lot of conversations.
Council Tivnan asked me to have coffee with her this week and carve out an hour, which if you guys have seen my schedule is an astronomical challenge for me. But she brought a photo book and wanted to tell me about how she kind of came to be who she was and and how in this, this elected body, she tends to take a step back so other people's experience can be highlighted. What I learned about her was incredibly insightful to like how I have interacted with her for the last two years and going forward. And it's a reminder that not all of us wear our backgrounds upfront and it's challenging. I'll tell you as a a combat veteran, talking about my experience in war is really challenging. And so when we're talking about communities that have been impacted by war through a lens in which I've actually lived, it's a challenging proposition and something I've had to like coach myself out of doing. You know, my dad's immigrant parents died and he ended up in foster care into the prison pipeline. And so I spent a lot of my time working on getting sentences commuted in the background. And so I always have this lens of like poverty and war and what has happened to go. And so I'm, I'm a firm believer in, in how we have to change those things to make our community better. It's not always easy to lead with that. I think my dad, who is a business owner now and really proud hates when I talk about his background because he doesn't want to identify that way anymore, but it's part of like who I am and how do I turn that off? And so I think a lot about that in this group and how we got here. One of the lenses we don't often bring is one of poverty. We make a lot, you know, there are counselors that have grown up in extreme poverty and it is shameful and it is hard for them to talk about. And so when we talk about intersectionalities, like really broadening what we're bringing to the table of understanding, I think is really important to us because clearly we're all driven. We want to do this work. We want to make change for our communities. I think where we, where the differences in conflict is who do we prioritize first? How do we prioritize it? How do we talk about it? And what do we do when there's conflict between two values? And I think that's a lot of where we often end up is the conflict of values and how do we prioritize? Um, I will tell you, having joined a council that looked very different than this council now. This is exciting for our community. I think it's incredibly representative of what our community looks like, what we're bringing together. But, um, you know, as Counselor Kimmy has been talking to me about, you know, helping him engage with the Korean community and individually, all of you guys do it and you know, how to pull levers of power. How do we kind of move past that individual individuality, but teamwork, but not leave it? I don't think we have to leave our identities to share these goals. We don't have to leave our values to share these goals. And there will always be times where there's conflict or we think we made the wrong decision. And I'm not a leader that's going to ask you guys to just shut up and go along with the ma- majority. I just hope it's rare. Because we're spending this time together and it's a good investment. So, I don't know.
All right. Jenny, is there anything you want to add to this conversation? You've had the opportunity to kind of sit back and listen for a minute. And this is the, the team you work with on the regular.
Yeah, um, I, I love all of the, the strengths and the differences conversation. And it just, um, it's really important to be a student of people. And that really gives me insight into, um, the body that I serve. So I really appreciate that council. And one of the things that, um, I didn't hear that I want you to acknowledge that you all have is we've had some challenging conversations, right? We know that we're, we've got a challenging environment and we need to advance goals in that environment. Um, and what that takes is resilience. And what this team has, and I think also the team that is listening in and the team that is behind you is that they have grit. And if you've done any of the, um, reading and studies, that is actually one of the characteristics that is required in order to persevere and to get through tough times. And so I want you to keep that in mind, that that strength of yours is going to come through the, the next fiscal year and the, the future years as we're navigating through this. So I'd leave you with just one statement, um, is that to remember to hold your vision and trust the process. And I know that that's scary. Um, and I really want to emphasize trust the process. And you took that first step today. So thank you. I'm really proud, um, to work alongside of you. And, um, thank you for this opportunity to put this together to Sarah. But more importantly, thank you to the team that is behind us and the team that's listening in and the organization. That, that is what is going to advance your goal and get through this. And then with your leadership, um, so just a, a note of gratitude.
I feel really good about the conversation you just had. I hope you guys feel good about it. Do we have any more confetti bombs?
My budget only allowed for one.
Well, I'm just gonna, yeah, express gratitude to the group. Thank you for, thank you for your good work. Oh, yeah, we're almost there. Yeah, you can start it in just a minute. I'll tell you when. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Some next steps. I'll work with Jenny to put together a summary of, of the excellent things you all accomplished this weekend and, um, and get you set on your path forward to, uh, go through your budget process, get your work plan developed and get you off and running on your, your goals and priorities. So thank you. Um, thank you for your efforts in putting this together and the input you provided. It makes it easier to design an agenda and, um, looking forward to see how Beaverton thrives over the next couple of years with, with strong leadership.
One thing I forgot is thank you to, um, uh, the managers and recorders office to, uh, Jessica and Jesse in the background who made all this stuff come together. Couldn't have done it without you.
We can't, we have to thank Ashley and, um, and Sasha, I think, and especially for the donuts this morning. That was, that was clutch, really set a good tone for the day. So sugar for everyone. All right. Lots of gratitude. Hit the song and close this out, whatever you officially need to do.